Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Mayrow, Tenhend.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the invocation by Pastor David Packard. Please stand.
One of the things we are grateful for and that we, I know that you work for and we work for is that we keep our community a place that's a great place to live, and work, and lie, and worship. And yesterday, I had the, oh, two days ago, I had the good occasion to be at Monkey Mountain Park and see the Chief of Police scratching the dirt with some police officers and members of the Public Works Department, all for this cause of making sure there were food in the pantry. And I got to reflecting on that, and not just about Chief of Police, but about all the other fine citizens who were endeavoring in that day to do something for folks that aren't able always to do for themselves. And I thought, what a better reflection it is upon our community that those who serve in a great, other varieties of ways take time to ensure that there is a web in our community that makes it a place that is a good place to live and work. So I just wanted to express my gratitude, to the Chief, but that he would extend that to all the other members I know that I saw of the city out there, expending a good deal of energy and endangering them. In the name of making Grand Valley a great place. That's what we pray, gracious God, that this would be a place of blessing, that this would be a place where regardless of the economic place, the status that we enjoy, regardless of the size of house that we live in, or which one of the buildings we might go to school, or which one of the buildings we might go to church, or where we might shop, that it's a place, Father, where our neighbors know us and where we can care one for another. So I just pray a blessing on these who've gathered tonight to govern. We pray, Father, that they would recall that this is a sacred trust, one that's been given to them by their neighbors, that they would speak for us, that they would legislate for us, that they would seek the common good for us. So we pray you'd give them wisdom beyond their own ability, that you'd give them an innate ability to sense that which is right and just and good, and that you'd give them an extra dose of courage to do that which serves the public. We pray, in the name of the one who can make it so, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please, please, invite Alderman Schaefer.
Uh, please, please, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any changes?
Uh, no, there are no changes, but however, we do require executive session this evening under real estate. And I do want to caution everybody, we have had the sound system tweaked a little bit. We might get a little feedback on that, although I think Alderman Arnold took care of that a few seconds ago, but if we do, just hold on, it'll, that too shall pass.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is propretations, chose the reason. Following item is citizen participation. Anyone that cares to make any comments tonight.
I think the sound system sounds a lot better, so thank you for doing that. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I'm glad we can finally discuss the contract. I hope tonight that before you decide on the contract, that some key questions may be brought up. It saddens me that our mayor allowed our administrator to breach her contract with the city by living in Blue Springs. Her contract states clearly that she had to live in Grand Valley four weeks after the sale of her home, which was April 13th. So as of May 13th, there was a breach of contract. So from May to June, June to July, July to tonight, because I think it's 13th, that's three months, we have had this issue taking our time. And I really feel sad that the Aldermen were not informed. To my understanding, it's come out that the mayor knew, and the mayor allowed the administrator, which I don't think it's all her fault. If you ask a question and the mayor says okay, then, you know, I think you should be able to do that. But I think our Aldermen should have been asked so that they could have made the, maybe some questions, or they could have decided upon it, instead of them being in the dark that there was a breach of contract. So it really saddens me that this has occurred, but it has. We have to move forward. But it has happened before. The former mayor asked the former administrator, he wanted to live outside of the city limits, and he was told no. So there would be no appearance of favoritism, there would be no violation of ethics, there would be no breaking of a valid contract, and then there would be no amendments. So this did come up again. So what I'm asking tonight is, first of all, that the 3,000 relocation, that that either be thrown out or not given, second, that the 3,600 be prorated to when she did move to Blue Springs, and third, that there be something in place, so like, if the first contract was breached, what's to protect the city if the second contract is breached? Just want to have some things for the protection of the city, and the citizens, and the taxpayers. So I just ask you that you would ask those questions. Thank you so much.
Anyone else have any comments? The next, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda. I know that we accept the standard agenda. Have a motion from Alderman Schaefer to accept the consent agenda. Second. Second by Alderman Arnold. Next item on the agenda is presentations. I show none. Any discussion on the consent agenda? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same aye. Same sign. Next item on the agenda. Presentations, I show none. Next item, new business, I show none. And the next item on the agenda is new business, I show none. Finally, the next item is ordinances.
This is Bill number B-12-45, being brought for second reading, which will become ordinance 2243, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Grand Valley to enter into an agreement with Tri-County Water Authority and the City of Blue Springs.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-1245 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2243. What?
2243.
2243.
I have a motion from Alderman Schaefer to approve Bill 1245 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2243. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alderman Arnold.
Aye.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
This is the second reading of Bill B-12-46, which will be ordinance 2244, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with propertyroom.com for auction of abandoned, found, recovered, or seized city property deemed surplus.
I move that we accept Bill number B-1246 for a second reading, making it an ordinance 2244.
I have a motion from Alderman Totten to approve Bill 12-46, bring it for, for its second reading, bring it back, making it ordinance 2244. Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
It's the second reading of Bill number B-12-47, which will become ordinance 2245, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a three-year agreement with Windstream for phone service.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-1247 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2245.
And second.
I have a motion from Alderman Schaefer, Bill 12-47, bring it back for a second reading, it's ordinance number 2245. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Totten. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
The second reading of Bill number B-12-48, which will become ordinance 2246, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Bass Communication Services Inc. for phone system, access card, and site security repair and maintenance services.
I know that we accept Bill number B-12-48 for a second reading, and making it ordinance 2246. I have a motion from Alderman Scully to accept Bill 12-48, making it ordinance 2246. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West. It's the second reading of Bill number B-12-49, which will become ordinance 2247, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a network video recording surveillance system.
Mayor, I'd like to accept Bill 1249 for a second reading, and make it ordinance 2247.
I have a motion from Alderman Arnold to accept Bill 12-49, making it ordinance 2247. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mayor, what can I? A couple of things. I think in the paperwork that came out with this bill, it stated that there were 34 cameras, and actually, when I talked with Ryan, there were 27 cameras instead of 34.
I think it's actually vice versa.
Pardon me?
I believe in the paperwork that has stated that there's 27, and there was some confusion as to whether there was 34 or 27.
The initial one that came out said there were 34. But there is 27, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Certainly, I think it's important that we do know that each additional exterior camera will be $846, and that includes a licensing fee of $128. If we purchase interior cameras, that will be $653.15, and again, including a licensing fee of $128. I think sometimes there's a fine line between wants and needs, and unfortunately, I think that this ended up being more wants than needs.
Any other comments? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
It's the first reading of Bill number B-12-51, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to amend the City of Grand Valley's employment agreement with Alexa Barton.
Mayor, I'd like to move to accept Bill 1251 for its first reading, and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Alderman Arnold to accept Bill 12-51 for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, I would like to put in place something that says that we all understand that there are construction delays, weather, whatever could cause a delay, that something be put into place to where we get periodic updates with regards to how this construction is meeting the timeframe and so on.
Is that something we need to work on in the executive session, or?
No. I'm sorry. The, I don't know, and I may kick it to math, but I don't think that there needs to be anything in the contract that states that there will be periodic construction updates. I think that's probably just a commitment that Ms. Barton could make to the board, and probably would fall within the reasonable expectations of the city administrator to report that.
I would agree with that. I'm sorry, what, what did you say? I disagree with Mr. Hunt's statements.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is the first reading of Bill number B-12-52, an ordinance amending the adopted City of Grand Valley's marketplace tip special allocation fund reserve policy.
I move that we approve Bill B-12-52 for its first reading, bring it back to its, for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Alderman West to approve Bill 12-52 for its first reading, bring it back for a second reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Yes, in case the board had some, in case you had any questions regarding this, this is the reserve policy that...
Tom Calco.
Yeah, Tom Calco, thank you very much, came and spoke to you about, at the time that he came and spoke to us, it was, there was a belief that it could only be attributed to the general fund. In all actuality, we received additional information from Sid Douglas, our bond counsel, God bless you, that stated we could include all of the funds, or all of the sales tax areas that include Capital Park.
Transportation.
Transportation in general.
General.
General, are all eligible to have that reserve. And so that's, that's why we broadened this, to include those additional areas, and it'll help you get to that reserve that you designated within that policy sooner.
Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Mayor, what can? Do we have any kind of projected dollar amount that that will increase by using all of the sales tax? Into that fund, or will we put a limit on that fund, or how, how is that going to be handled basically?
As to the amount that we would try to get to before we're at that establish area, well, a lot of it's going to depend upon what our debt load is at the time, and how many issuances we've had, we've had. So depending upon what that issuance is, because you're, you're trying to get to three years' worth, it could be a moving target, depending upon the number of bond issuances that you have. But once you issue that first bond, then you're going to have a dollar amount, and we can share with you what that's going to be, but when the next bond issuance occurs, and you've got the next dollar amount, and because it's going to raise the amount of your debt payment, then that, then the reserve's going to fluctuate again. And we tried to write it in such a way so that it is a, probably an excelling target, but we wanted to make sure that we had the monies in reserves, just to be financially prudent. So...
Will that allocation coming out of that fund come back to the board for approval? Because that's...
You mean if it's ever spent, or?
Pardon me?
You mean if it's ever spent, or?
No, I'm saying that in the policy, it says that the city administrator's directed to take the steps necessary to appropriate the shortfalls, and it talks about taking monies out of that account. So my question is...
Yeah, you'll be getting updates on that as to if, if the projects, when the project begins to perform, and those funds are coming in, if there are not enough funds to be able to pay for debt, the debt payment, and we're having to look at utilizing that fund, it would go through this board for approval of payment, so that you'll know the status of that reserve, and how it's performing, and how much is having to be taken from there in order to make the payment, if those projects don't perform the way we hope.
At that time of year, I would think we would have to make it a budget amendment to spend that money, because probably, we would assume it would produce the revenue, and we're not budget for that payment out of city funds. So we'd have to do a budget amendment, and that would be more things that we'd have to come to the board. I would, and again, Mayor, I would like to see if we could, could do some kind of trending during this process, since this is certainly an unknown entity that we're working with, that we could do a trending report periodically to show where we stand with regards to this fund, and our reserve, and that type of thing. I would be most happy to work with, like I'm saying, Capita, to see if we could come up with some kind of a training report for the board, if that is okay.
This sounds fair. Try something.
Absolutely.
Let me just work the detail out.
Yes.
Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is the first reading of Bill number 12-53, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to utilize the Cooperative Purchasing Network TCPN contract for the 2012 Curated Place Pipe Rehabilitation CFPD Sanitary Sewer Project with SAC Construction LLC.
Mayor, I'd like to accept Bill 11, excuse me, 1253, and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Alderman Arnold to accept, to approve Bill 12-53 for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
I have a question.
On the list.
Actually, I guess we'll go Ryan. I, in the past, I have seen trucks labeled with this in city form, I mean, quite a few of them actually, and I was wondering, was there some particular reason why, I mean, I know that they put in a bid, but is there any particular reason? Did you have some difficulties with this company, or they didn't perform well?
Within city form? No, SAC Construction has a bid that's been accepted by several different government, government entities, and it was actually competitively bid. So SAC kind of being the wheelhouse of sewer lining, has come in lower with a, with a bid, and so we decided to accept that one.
So do we have any history with this SAC construction company at all, other than, I mean, have you had any of the city working before?
No. But, I mean, they're a large company. I mean, be similar to Rod Mark are doing our interchange project. They have good, good references, their experiences as well with other cities.
I noticed that a lot of this project is intermingled with the I-70 project, so, I mean, how, who's going to be coordinating the sewer construction, or reconstruction with the, with the I-70 project?
Yeah, they'll actually be, are you able to look at the map that we sent out? By chance, do you have a map up there that we sent out? Okay. The portions that you see that are going to be covered are actually just finishing up the downtown improvement area. There won't be any of the sewer lines that are done within the project area. So I guess to answer your question, they won't be lining any lines that the interchange project is working on. And as far as coordinating that, that responsibility would fall to Patrick Martin, he's the Maintenance Superintendent, and then Tom Chamberlain, she's our Operations, Operations Manager.
Any other questions? I have one question. Is this, has this been done in cities around us? Have you talked to these folks?
As far as...
As far as the kind of work they're doing here? I mean, is this a...
Yeah, this is, it's pretty standard, especially for aging infrastructure, you know, when we have sewer systems, like we have downtown, where you have the vitrified, vitrified clay pipe, it starts to break down, and so it's very difficult for a city to treat it. In fact, this is the least expensive and longest lasting treatment that you can apply to it. The City of Blue Springs does it, City of Oak Grove does it. It's pretty much the standard for, for pipe reheating.
And you're just basically, or they're just lining the pipes internally, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it almost looks like for, for anybody that hasn't seen it, it's like a large sock, basically, and they put it down inside of the sewer line, and they pressurize it from one side, and it unrolls all the way up the sewer line, and then they do a pressure treatment on it, and have some chemicals that they put inside of the line to help set it up, similar to like cast material. And then they just go up the line with a little robot, and it cuts out all the sewer connections, which they do coordinate, again, with the residents and the homeowners, that, you know, if they're going to be covering their service connection, they have communication with that homeowner.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I ask one? Is that the same thing that you guys were doing up on Front Street, well, I mean, when they were putting in some of the work in our sewer lines, because they had the camera and everything, that we could see?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Yeah, this is, actually, I believe it's the fifth year of this program that we've done, the fifth and final year, so...
It's pretty neat, but you see them, go out and watch, because, and they got this little camera, and it sticks up through the lines, and it's really interesting to see. So I know what you're talking about.
Definitely not primetime material, but it is interesting.
But at least I know what you're talking about.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And I believe that's it for ordinances. Next item on the agenda is resolutions. I show none. City Attorney's Report?
None.
City Administrator and Staff Reports?
Aaron, you got something?
Yeah, Mayor and Board, I just want to thank everybody for a very successful night out on Prime. I think we had about 398 people sign in, you know, that includes all the children and everywhere there is. We probably had around 500 people at the event. Very successful event, didn't have any related casualties, actually, the heat subsided pretty well. I began to get cold in the dump tank as the night ended. And just want to thank everybody for everything they, they, they done for SAC.
Yes, sir.
Chuck Johnson cooked hot dogs again this year, and just, just had a great time, so thanks a bunch for everything. for everything.
One of the other things that I wanted to bring to your attention that I have shared with you previously is that, and Ryan did an awesome job on this, we put out a notice in the utility billing regarding the importance to try to conserve water right now. We are not water rationing, this was just a simple question of please consider it, and if you've seen the information that I've sent, and probably most of the residents have as well, it basically just gives some examples of, if you look at watering thirty minutes a day versus an hour, this is the amount of water that you could conserve, just wanted to get that out, more of an educational piece. On the flip side of that information is a notice of road closure, and it gives a map that shows, a lot of discussions occurred regarding the I-70 interchange project and that the fact that Main Street's going to be closed between Yenya and Walnut, and it's looking like around the mid-September through mid-December. Of course, we can all hope that it doesn't last that long, but that's what MoDOT's telling us at this time. He was, put a great notice in, had a map in there as well. We went one step further and last week also mailed a, the same type of information along with the same map to the business owners along Main Street, just to notify them so that there's no surprises. MoDOT's actually doing a press release as well, so it's going to be continuous information. We announced it last week at the senior citizens lunch as well, you know, wherever we can, whenever we can, we want to get that information to folks so that they're not surprised, and I just want to thank Ryan for taking care of that. And that's all I have.
Mr. Paul, Alderman, course of comments? Alderman Arnold? Alderman West? Alderman Scully?
Thanks for replying to me last week on Long Drive. Do you know when Rick's going to have, he had to finish up some kind of, I forget how he worked it, but he was going to review it a little more, and let me see what kind of detail. And so if you get back with Mr. Duke, you got an idea when that will be done?
Yeah, he hasn't given me his results yet, but the study was actually supposed to be finished tomorrow, so once, once that traffic count study is done, it'll probably take Rick a day or two to go through and tabulate the results, find out what the speeds are. I would say by the end of the week, but I'll, I'll talk to Rick tomorrow and actually have him get in touch with you just to, to give you a timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, yes, I'd like to say thank you, I, and I appreciate all the information going out to the businesses, because I had a gentleman come up, he was upset, somebody had told them they were closing off the underpass of I-70 all the way down, and I was trying to explain, and God love them, they took the time, I brought them up to see Alexa and Ryan, and I looked real hunky-dory, I was in my pink clothes, and boy, I'll tell you what, that wasn't the way I normally go out visiting. And then, of course, I have to say an extra thank you for the chief and Mr. Cross, because they put up some of my shenanigans at the policeman's night out, but I had a parent tell me that that's all children talked about, was the fact that they got to dump them. They didn't do it with the ball after they, you know, you don't want a child's timing, so we learned how to go over there, and you know it's hard to hit that red button and get him to go down, but we did it. Yes, yeah. Thank you all very, very much. We had a wonderful time.
Alderman Chamber?
Ron, I was wondering what we could do on Montana Ridge? If they guess possible, make a four-way stop there?
Most likely no, because it doesn't fall within the warrants for that. We have people periodically call the city and ask if we can put, use a stop sign for a speed control device. The problem is, is that we follow the MUTCD guidelines, which, those guidelines set out what's acceptable and what's not. I can definitely have them look to see if the warrants are there. I would venture to say at this point with the traffic studies and the speed trailer that we've had out there, that's probably been looked into, but I would like to talk to Rick about that and, and find out if it's a possibility.
I was, I was talking to the mayor of the speech, and I'm talking to the chief today about the problem they had with that, is it's on their side of the street, and there was an eagle on the other side, so when the traffic was coming at it, they had to slow down anyway, so, you know, I don't know, is it possible to get the, maybe the one we put on the pole put up out there? Where it's not so obvious and it's out of the way? Maybe up on top of the hill facing back to the north, I believe, just to, maybe just to see where we really are with that.
And one thing we might think of Alderman Schaefer is what Alderman Scully was just talking about over on Long Drive, we've actually put out traffic counters, it's not near as obvious as a speed trailer or even a monitor that shows it, people typically don't know that they're there, it's just a little black tube that you see running across the road, and we can get vehicle speeds off of that, you know, time of day that the travel's there, time of day that speeds increase, and we're able to do that without the, you know, the psychological impact of a flashing radar trailer looking, looking at people, they typically won't slow down for a traffic counter.
Because I, I talked to Tom and the chief about the, the speed ops, and they don't seem to be very proficient. Like the chief said, he told me to knock about the one on the hand, so I went over and take a look at it, and really, you, hey, you go right around it, it's kind of a waste of taxpayers' money, really. I went over there the other day on Saturday and just kind of watched the traffic go through there, and, you know, you got the hill that goes up, you come up this, it flattens out, and then goes back up the hill, and you know, without, just visual eyes, it seemed like people were traveling very fast to there, so I don't know, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to look at a four-way stop, maybe, to me, that would be, you know, I don't think putting the sign up there is going to do any, did you have a chance to see? I didn't have a chance.
I did go up and down. There are no, there are no speed signs, and I, I parked in this shop radar in my, in my unmarked car for about an hour. I checked thirty-one cars, and his average speed was about twenty-three, twenty-eight miles an hour. There was a few of them in there that were putting along, you know, about seven over, six over, that was my highest, was seven over on the speed, but still, it's a tight area, and, you know, like I said, with the hill and everything, it's condensed pretty well, and there's a lot of tree growth in that area, and so I could see a lot of cars park on the streets.
I appreciate you, you and the chief.
I see where there's some problems there, but I didn't, and I wasn't sure about the four-way stop, I kind of figured it might be something there within the area.
That'd be, it'd be nice to have, I think a four-way stop would be a huge help, if at all possible, that way you can come up the hill, you get flat land, and you have to stop and start out again, but, so I agree with that, to be honest with you, I think that would break it up, and people would have to slow down, they'd have to start slowing down when they crest the hill.
I echo Alderman Schaefer's concerns, I've had a number of calls from residents along the street, I don't think we're going to have complaints if we do something that could close against the, the plan that you normally use, the placing signs and so forth, so it ultimately is to remind people to slow down.
Absolutely.
And I will comment, as I have in the past, about the use of the trailer and the flashing signs. I was out of town over the weekend, earlier in the past weekends, and a number of communities have had those there, and it does cause you to double check what your speed is doing, so, again, like I said before, this would be proactive, keep those out there, so as many people pay attention to that speed. Maybe have it on trees.
We can set our own rules, to put one, maybe a four-way stop out of it, correct? You, you got guidelines, that's all it is, guidelines, correct?
Exactly, but when it comes to traffic sign placement, you have to be careful going from those guidelines, because there's a tremendous amount of liability that lies with the city if you do start to waiver from those guidelines. They're nationally set, actually internationally recognized, and when you begin to, especially when you have those guidelines officially adopted and then you begin to move away from them, there is some, some liability that, that can be there. I'm not saying that we can't, the first step we need to see is if the warrants exist. I can visit with our, our city engineer about it, and then it could go to the traffic committee, which is the committee that reviews all of those decisions.
Well, like the chief said to me today, you know, it seems like we're, we got speeding on every street. Every street. It's, it's going to happen. I mean, our officers can't be everywhere all the time, and I'm just trying to think what we can do to, the officers slow people down, and I realize we've got regulations, but there has to be something we can do some way that we can get people to slow down.
Yeah, I, I would say that if, if you hear from anybody or you have questions about it, you could probably just tell them we're taking very specific actions, one, by doing the traffic study out there, we'll, we'll go ahead and initiate the traffic study, we'll also look into the warrants to see if it fits the guidelines for a four-way stop, and if it doesn't, I'll have the conversation with the city engineer to find out if he thinks this is an area where we could get away from that, or if he feels strongly, and ultimately it can go, like I said, to the, to the traffic committee, the traffic commission.
I have a comment along those lines, this is the third situation we've had where we've had speed issues. Is there, besides the transportation committee, is there a way we could do something to accelerate the process, at least the review and, the review of the data setting the truck up or the trailer up there for the speed and so on, and just so citizens know we're, we're serious about, one, the safety of everyone driving, and, two, that, you know, that you don't really want to tolerate speed in some of these areas. Up north, I mean, it was, we went three, four, five months, and I think over a long drive, it's been, you know, almost three months now that we've been talking about it. I just, I think it'd be better if we could speed that whole process up to some degree.
Yes, and if there's, you know, really, the only time that it needs to go to the traffic commission is whenever there's a new sign that's going to be placed or the speed limit's going to be changed. As far as in-house process, yeah, we can look at streamlining to get this, these requests turned around quicker, absolutely. One of the problems that we've had is that, we've had one problem after another with our traffic, traffic counters, they're old, we're trying to use them, they're well beyond the end of life, but we're trying to continue to use them, seems like we're having regular repairs, so that always slows the process. Now, I mean, if, if we go to use them and they break, it's two weeks before we can get them back from the factory, so I'm trying to address that through budget this year, this upcoming, so you guys will probably be seeing that within the transportation budget, which that would allow for us to be a little bit quicker on the turnaround for the traffic studies.
I've noticed one thing, when, we're, we're having a problem, he's already, I had a gentleman that's gone up to the police station, every time somebody's moving in new to the neighborhood, they're not realizing, and I have a gentleman that's concerned because he stood and was waiting to go out and stand in the middle of the street to slow the guy down, because he's flying, and then we had a lady, I'm serious, both hands were here, driving down our, our street, and that does not make anybody feel too happy that's lived there for a while, but it seems like some of the younger people are more talented with their style of driving than the rest of us old people, but I couldn't believe it, there's three other people that witnessed this going on, but the gentleman's out collecting license plate numbers, and he will be back to visit the police department, so, and he's making the schedule so that you can check, have someone there to check, and I thank the officers that came out when I called them for the loud guardian and the blocking of the area, it must have scared them, because they moved. Lived there a month, and since we didn't go for part, again, they moved, so thank you for checking all that out, too, you guys were doing good. Tom, don't forget him, he came out, and he's done a wonderful job in working with a gentleman on the corner of the house, so I thank you all. I'm done.
Next item on the agenda, the mayor's report? I have something. There is a need for an executive session for leasing and purchasing or sale of real estate pursuant to section six, one zero, one, as a mention. Need a motion to go to executive session?
Motion adjourned. Executive session.
Second, I need a second. Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Yes.
Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
I saw him move last week.
During, during to executive session.